...emotional well-being, help you strengthen your own mental health, and impact your community for the good.
According to research completed by the Ad Council, about 50% of the population cite having a mental health condition, and less than half are engaged in getting helped. Speaking directly to faith leaders, we realized that pastors, youth pastors, deacons, priests, and lay leaders are often the first point of contact for individuals seeking help. And we wanted to provide them with the resources and tools they need first to support their own mental health, to better support their congregants and communities.
How are you today? And what do we say? Too blessed to be stressed, all right? I'm blessed and highly favored. However, while people may feel blessed, they could indeed feel very stressed.
God reminds us that whatever you can't take a rest from, you are ultimately a slave too.
You can't pour into other people's cup if yours is empty.
What if God cares more about who you are becoming than what you are accomplishing?
Mental health professionals are healers that God uses to help restore our minds to wholeness.
Together, let us break the stigma around mental health and create a space for our congregations to thrive, both spiritually and emotionally. This learning hub is brought to you by the Ad Council, Huntsman Mental Health Institute, and Value Partnerships.
This is one that gets exciting. There's a lot going on here. Now, you said you shared it with me, or you emailed it? Okay.
Um, Julie's coming late.
Julie is virtual, Mary's virtual. And, oh, Zach. I haven't heard from Zach. Oh, that's right, they all thought the other one.
So folks, we're just waiting for a forum of the school committee to join us, meaning we have to have a certain number of committee members to start the meeting officially. So bear with us, and we'll be right with you.
She said, yeah, if she could read, that'd be awesome.
Yeah, sure.
Perfect, thank you. If either of you are up for making motions through the night as well, sometimes it's trickier for folks at home to do that. Oh, we've got Mary. That's four. Is she... Mary, can you hear us all right? Mary, can you hear us all right?
Yes, thank you.
Perfect, all right. Brian, we're good whenever you guys are. Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, March 12th, 2024, School Committee Meeting. School committees and other public bodies may continue to hold remote meetings through March 31st, 2025. I'm pretty sure, right? Okay. Thank you. Under legislation enacted July of 2022, the statute, Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, extends quorum reductions for remote meetings. All votes while there is remote participation must be made by roll call vote. This meeting is being recorded and aired live on LCTV. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well done, folks. That really was. Very well done. All right, we're going to open with correspondence. We'll turn that over to you, Michaela.
The following correspondence will be recorded. A letter from Ms. Jennifer Greater and Ms. Elizabeth Ray dated February 27th, 2024 regarding the FY25 school budget. A memo from Mr. Donald Jarvis, Director of Occupational Education at the Lower Pioneer Valley Career and Technical Education Center regarding the Walter E. Quigley Jr. Student of the Month Award for February 2024. Long Meadow student honored this month is Evan Hart, Advanced Manufacturing.
All right, well done, Mr. Hart. We have a motion for approval of minutes.
I move that the school committee approve the minutes to the February 27th, 2024, School Committee Meeting as presented.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Oh, we have a second.
All right, any discussion? Seeing none, we will move to a roll call vote. Adam?
Yay.
Michaela?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And yes for me as well. All right, we are opening our public speak portion. If there's anybody here that would like to speak related to any public concerns. We mostly have families for Center School, but just triple checking, and nobody at home. All right, School Committee, business with guests. We are headed into two things. I'm guessing that we're reversing the order of these in Center School?
Yeah.
Yes, all right, perfect. Center School is here tonight to share with us information about their vision of the graduate, and they have a whole thing planned, and we welcome you to come on up. I know that we have...
So we have our two administrators, Mrs. Hutton and Mrs. Schmidtlin are here, and the advisor to the Green Team, Val Brown, and she's going to join us up here so she can advance the slides and coordinate the students, so.
We proudly introduce ourselves as the Green Club.
We are 43 passionate students dedicated to making positive changes and making the earth a better place for all life on our planet. This year, due to overwhelming interest, we divided into two clubs. Our GC Leadership Team is made up of 23 4th and 5th graders.
Most of us were in the Green Club last year. Additionally, we have our regular Green Club consisting of 20 3rd and 4th graders. We kick off each year with brainstorming sessions to generate ideas and select committees to contribute to.
The Plastic Wedding Committee is a constant committee with our Green Club activities. For several years, we've been actively engaged in the Trek Challenge, a contest sponsored by the composite decking company Trex. Participating schools collect plastic bags and film, submitting the weight to Trex. At every Green Club meeting, we weigh the plastic collected over a two-week period, preparing it for transport to Big Y, which our parents help us when they pick us up. Here is a time lapse video of us weighing the plastic altogether. Some of our members have reached out to businesses. We have gotten plastic from Mercy Hospital, Costco, Petco, Town and Country, J Group, and weekly from Athleta. Did you know that every piece of clothing from most stores come wrapped in plastic?
Sorry, it goes to the end.
From their Trex collects the plastic and brings it to their facility to manufacture Trex boards. The company generously rewards first and second place winners with benches made out of the Trex material. Two years ago, we just missed out on winning a bench by just one pound. This fueled our determination for the next year. Last year, our perseverance paid off as we proudly won second place. Here's a glimpse into our ecstatic reactions.
Center facing the northeast region of the Trex Challenge with 5,207 pounds.
We have won three benches since they changed the rules. Every school here, and any school that recycles at least 1,000 pounds will receive one of these high-quality benches. Blueberry may get one next year since Mrs. Coviala has started a Green Club there. We are hoping other Long Meadow schools join us, especially middle schools, since many of us will be there next year.
Since we started, we've prevented 9,685 pounds of plastic from ending up in wet fields, just shy of five tons. Here's a picture of our work featuring last year's mider. Showed us with 316 pounds. Now imagine that picture 30 times. It's like the weight of five elephants.
Additionally, we have participated in other recycling initiatives, such as Trick or Trash, where we bring in our candy wrappers to be recycled. We also recycle pens, glue sticks, mechanical scissors, toothpaste suits, toothbrushes, 10,000 markers over the years. We send in our broken cans to facilities where they have stripped of their paper and promoted for children in hospitals. These programs come and go, so if you hear of anything you might be interested in, please let us know.
Last year, when we learned that reusing was better than recycling, we decided to do a blanket drive. It was winter, so we knew we could help many homeless people get lunch. We collected gently used blankets, sheets, and pillowcases. We donated almost 200 items to the Springfield Rescue Mission.
This year, we had a book swap committee. During the holidays and the book fair, we asked families to clean up their gently used books for a book swap. It's more environmentally friendly to swap out with another than to buy new. We... We collected boxes and boxes of books. We sorted and organized them and hosted a book swap in January. Every student at Center School was able to bring home a book. Some chose one for themselves, and others chose to pick one as a gift for a family member. At the end, we still had quite a few boxes and books. Over vacation, we brought them to Itsy Bitsy Daycare at Holyoke Community College. This is a free daycare for single parents going back to school. They offer a plan that where families can go and pick out whatever they need. We are happy to contribute to the collection of books and/or the daycare on college campus.
The Neighborhood Green Club started because we knew a lot about helping the environment in our own neighborhoods, and we wanted to share that with others. We draw colorful posters to put up around our streets to remind everyone to be green. We ask our neighbors to help us collect plastics so we can recycle it. And we even made bookmarks with cool pictures about saving energy and out to everyone. You can also upcycle something old and say something new.
We have made juice pouch bags and wallets. We also made a solar oven to take home to make smores powered by the sun.
We have some committees in the middle of projects right now. The Recycle Display Committee is in the process of creating display so everyone knows what can and can't be recycled at Center School. We hope to spread the word and make everyone excited to recycle. The Compost Committee has been hard at work. They've written letters to Mrs. Hutton, saving permission to kickstart composting in our cafeteria. They've also collaborated with Mr. Russ, our custodian, who's on board to help in cafeteria. Announcements have been written, posters have been created to spread the word. Excitingly, Mrs. Bowman has agreed to join it, providing containers necessary for collecting food scraps to be composted, marked their calendars for March 29th, as that's when the composting officially begins.
The Seed Library Committee is busy preparing for the launch of the Seed Library this spring. They're organizing various seeds into ensuring that they can take. Here how students can check out seeds to plant at home. Once the plants grow, they'll return with new seeds, ensuring the cycle continues. The goal is to improve air quality as plants produce oxygen and purify the air.
We've recently embarked on a mission to reduce waste in our cafeteria. Our goal is to replace single-use utensils and trays with traditional metal silverware and reusable plastic trays. Shyla, a student from the LHS, attended one of our meetings and shared her team's success story making this change at the high school. She generously provided custom for valuable research, and we pitched out to Ms. Hutton for approval to kickstart this initiative. While we're still on this initial phase, Dr. O'Shea is expecting us soon to arrange a meeting and discuss greater plans.
You got it.
We would like to end our presentation with this Do One Thing video we created last year.
We are the Green Club, and we have been more ambitious!
Wait, just stop!
What?
Do one thing, stop!
Stand for Do One Thing. This is a commitment to let children be heard, because it's always been our mission to promote the same changes we've done. Like, it's not just a matter of fact.
Do one thing!
Do one thing! I'm willing to make a big difference. And as individuals, we each have the power to make small changes every day. Hashtag Do One Thing!
Do one thing!
We invite you to make a personal commitment today. We challenge every adult in town to do it. We have many ideas for you to make up for your own.
Do one thing!
If you save the incident, you put it away every day and leave it in the cupboard and brushing your teeth.
Do one thing!
Other idea. I think there's a lot of ideas. I can put my brush in right there.
Do one thing!
I can take a shower. I can put my back in when you're smoking cigarettes.
Do one thing!
I can turn on the TV when no one is watching.
Do one thing!
I can turn off the light when I leave the room.
Do one thing!
We are recycling as much as we can, but we know that recycling is not the only solution. Over 90% of the plastic ever made has not been recycled. Instead, it is nothing but mantles, firemen, or releasing toxic pollution. We cannot simply recycle our way through this crisis.
Do one thing!
We're asking you to do one thing.
Do one thing!
Thank you for helping!
Do one thing!
We want to leave you with a gift to show how much we care about our planet. Remember, every little thing we do affects the world around us. So let's be peace builders for the earth. We made a special dishwasher detergent just for you.
It's way better than the ones you buy at the store. It doesn't have any harsh chemicals. Plus, we are giving you a plant clipping that you can plant at home. It will help make the air cleaner and greener. Any questions?
Hold on, you guys were...
We've got stuff to tell you to be playing. Do you want... We'll do that, let them ask questions and make comments, and then you can hand out. Can we leave something for the members that are here? Okay, great.
We'll bring them to them. You guys, that was fantastic. That was incredibly impressive in a lot of ways. You're doing so much great work, and I love how involved you are in your community and how many things you are doing. I see Ms. Drawick is standing over here, and she is one of the assistant principals over at the high school who's here to talk to us about Student Advisory Council, and I feel like I see your next generation of kids like getting ready to go, right? So many impressive things. I love that you have all these different committees in your group. You're using your time together to really do impressive work, and I love that you're working and doing so many awesome things there. And a lot of great stuff that you told us about today. I'm going to open and let other people say things too, because I know they've got a lot of great compliments to give you on the great work you're doing. Who would like to go first? Oh, Andrew.
I just want to say how impressed I was with the detail in your guys' presentation. I thought it was really fantastic. It was so informative. And I think once you guys get to the high school, you guys are going to have some awesome opportunities within student government and with the LHS Climate Change Club. And maybe I would recommend reaching out to them. I think you guys could do some really awesome stuff working together between our two schools.
Definitely. All right, next up, go forward, Adam now.
Uh, I don't know, I try to keep it sweet. History is written by those who show up. And at such a young age, for you guys to be, you know, participating actively in this is great. You should never doubt that a small group of people can change the world because they're the only people who do. So just keep it up, this is fantastic.
Well done.
Thank you guys so much. You guys are little rock stars, and you could teach a lot of adults lessons on how to make the world a better place. And you're not stopping at your school. You're making the whole community a better place. And so thank you so much. You guys are all amazing public speakers. Incredible.
Did a great job. You practiced in town. Anybody at home? Oh, Mary's hand is up, so we'll let her go too.
Hi, everyone. This was fun to watch on a computer. I couldn't decide if I wanted to look at the video recordings or the kids presenting, so I kept changing my view. You did an excellent job, both speaking in person and also with all of the video clips and artwork you included in the prepared presentation. Thank you so much for coming to share. I always say this when students come, but it's the best part of the meetings by far. So thank you so much for being there. You did a great job.
Always, always, definitely true. That is our favorite part. And it's just really commendable work. You guys have five tons. Five tons of plastic. That's amazing. And hundreds of blankets and books and so many great things. So keep doing all this wonderful work.
And just as your superintendent, I'm so proud of you. And you've made your school proud and your families proud, and just give yourselves a big pat on the back. Mrs. Brown might be able to refresh our memory, but it was several years ago that we had a similar presentation from the Green Team when it was just getting started, I'd say.
And actually, one of our originals appears, is John Luca's sister. She was... They're seniors now.
There you go. So this group that are now seniors came to the school committee years ago and presented some of the early activities of the Green Team. And now it's grown. And how about a round of applause for Mrs. Brown? Who's created these opportunities for all of you. It's amazing. And I know, as Andrew said, I know the high school folks are eager to have you join. Even opportunities will grow as you move through Long Meadow Public Schools, so. So impressive.
Thank you. So they have a gift for you, and if there's extras, just put them on the table and we'll get them to the members that are here.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Oh, thank you so much.
Thank you so very much!
You can do lectures right here. We've got them to some of the other committees. You guys are the best. All right.
All right. Thank you. Thank you so much for coming out tonight, you guys, and thank you so much for the work you guys are all doing with them. Well done. Have a good rest of your night. Thank you so much, all the parents for coming out. I appreciate it. All right, thank you both for being here too. Appreciate your time tonight and all your support for the club. We have another student thing tonight, which is exciting. We got lots of time with our students tonight. Our Student Advisory Council, rather, is here from the high school and ready to share us an update about what's going on at Long Meadow High. Welcome them in. You guys can full cheers back.
I know we're not supposed to close the door, but I'll close the door. Thanks.
All right, welcome, Student Advisory Council. We are looking forward to hearing what's going on.
So we got the chance to go to Hyannis, to Convention Center there, and we were there with, I think, 1,200 other student council members from across the state. We heard lots of keynote speakers, did lots of workshops, and did an election as well. My favorite part of it personally was just the confidence that it brings me, being around a lot of like-minded individuals. You know, you're walking down the hall, and you just look at someone, you're like, oh, I love your hair, or, oh, hi, like, you don't even have to know them. And I've made tons of friends through it. And the keynote speakers especially kind of give me the confidence to bring that energy back to Long Meadow and be able to walk through the halls and just like bring people together. And I want to especially thank Ms. Drawick for bringing us there and bringing this environment to our school and really like brightening it. And also shout out to Zainab, who is just always holds herself with such grace and brings such a positive light to everywhere. Thank you guys for letting us go as well. Um, yeah, so I'll start off with just saying thank you as well for approving it. We had such an amazing time there. I reconnected with people that I had met at previous conferences, which was so great, and I met so many new people. It was just an amazing experience to bring back more workshops and more events to our school, which is so fun because our student council is developing a little bit more since Ms. Drawick has been here because we haven't really focused on that a bunch. But it's so great to be able to talk to other students about what they do and how well it works at their schools and just kind of put it in action here.
I agree with what Cece and Pritha Skiball said. I'm a senior at LHS, so thank you guys so much for giving us permission to go on this trip. It was really nice to do this my last year at LHS, and I hope that you guys keep, we keep continuing to do this in the future. Like Cece said, we were like packed and doing so many things. Personally, my favorite things were the workshops because we got to collaborate with other students from other schools and learn what they were doing. And my favorite workshop was our Special Olympics workshop. I just joined Unified Basketball this year, and we've never, or with my knowledge, we've never had that at LHS. So it was really cool. So I'm hoping that later we can incorporate that more in our school system. But thank you again so much. And we also won an award.
Get that.
Way to go.
This award was presented in recognition of our student council's involvement and support in all phases of the Massachusetts Student Council statewide. So we've been doing like conferences, right? So we held a conference here. I don't know if you guys knew about that, but that was super fun. And we've been going to them from February, right?
Yeah, February 1st last year.
To now. And so since we're like officially like a part of the Massachusetts State Student Council, we won this award. So thank you guys so much.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Hi, my name is Zainab. I'm a junior here at Long Meadow High School. I, again, also want a second brand new statement and just start off by thanking all of you guys because this truly would not have been...
because this truly would not have been possible without your permission. And then, of course, Ms. Drowick for everything she has done. I was running for the position of vice president on the state board. First time Long Meadow has ever been represented or will be represented on the state board. I was a regional delegate this year, so I worked on the Western Mass Board. So I didn't get the vice president position, but we did make it on to the state board. I'm the delegate for Western Mass on the Massachusetts State Board. So Long Meadow is now represented. And hopefully in the future, we will have someone running for president, which I'm super excited to see where all of this takes us. Yeah, I agree with everything. The workshops were amazing. I, it feels weird to say that I made lifelong friends because it was in the span of three days. Like, you know, how many connections can you make in three days? But the environment over there is truly just, it's a different world. And I really did feel like I made lifelong connections over there. And I feel like those connections are so valuable and will be valuable, just networking in general. And my favorite workshop was also the Special Olympics workshop. I think inclusivity in all aspects is so important. And it can just make one school, it can make such a big difference in one school. And Long Meadow's been an inclusive place. But I think by working, attending that workshop, I can bring back what we learned. And I just have a better understanding of what inclusivity is and how we can add that to our school and make it better. I also just want to say thank you to my delegation, to every single person who went on this trip with me, 14 other people. It would not have, I would not even have been on the state board if it weren't for all the campaigning they did with me. And I think we all represented Long Meadow really, really well at this conference.
Congratulations. Congratulations on your delegation. Looking forward to having you represent us for next year. I'm going to take a moment and just, and before you do that, I know that I kind of, we already, a lot of us know everybody already. So I just want to give everybody a minute to just, for the whole community who might be watching at home, introduce yourselves.
Yes.
I'm Zainab. I'm a junior here.
I'm Brinley. I'm a senior.
I'm Cece. I'm a senior.
I'm Francesca and I am a junior.
All right, go for it.
We have very humble student leaders. Quick shout out to Betsy Mitchell and Mary O'Rose, our department, who really helped us kind of formulate. We might not be the most creative folks, but they helped us. And we had students working over February vacation, helping us kind of get all of this stuff done. We had such a beautiful delegation going. And in all my years of doing this, we've truly had an in-sync delegation that, whose purpose was they truly believed that Zainab was a great leader for the state and they supported her 110%. There was a lot of stress those weeks, those days, feels like weeks, because she was running against four other people. We were the underdogs because they don't quite know us yet. They do now. And then at 10 o'clock at night on Thursday night, they announced a runoff election, which means she didn't get over 50%, but she got the top two votes from the initial election. So at that point, we knew she was on the state board, but we were going against Middleborough High School, which that's where the state director's from. So we knew that that, yeah. So we knew that that was going to be a big feat to win. But it wasn't a landslide vote. I'm just so proud of the delegation. They also ran a workshop about how to create different types of leaders and bring different strengths to a team. So Zainab, Adele and Kate, Adele and Kate couldn't make it today, but they also ran a workshop. And it was one of the best-ranked workshops because kids got to bring stuff home. And it was a wonderful experience. So thank you again for supporting them. I know they're saying permission, but first your support. Because student leadership is such an important skill for them to learn and to grow. We have two students here who are going to be going to college next year. And it's so important. And this is their second year going. Zainab did a great job on the regional board and now she's going to be leading us on the state board, which there are going to be, right now there's eight students on it. There'll be a total of 12. So she's going to be one of the 12 students in the whole state leading us. So that's incredible. It was just a great time. So thank you so much. I always say that they wear their superhero capes under their clothes because they are the heroes of this school. And the inclusivity, we are now a unified champion school, which means that we are doing Unified Bocce. We did the polar plunge on Wednesday.
It was fun.
It was cold in the ocean, but we raised money for Special Olympics. And then we also did the Unified Basketball and that was a group of teachers. We also celebrate with them because that was a great program that we had and hopefully will continue. So again, thank you for all your support. Andrew wanted to go, but school was tough for him to miss. But I think that the students just really kind of, they didn't know what they were going into and they just embraced it. I always say participate, don't anticipate. And they did. And they represented Long Meadow High School and the public school system really well with poise, with grace and with courage. So thank you for, and thank you to all elementary, middle school teachers for teaching them how to lead that way because that is learned behavior. So, and thanks to the families because we put it to a end. So thank you very much.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Wow, yeah. So impressive.
All right. We'll open up for questions, comments, feedback. Mary?
Well, that was applauding, but I'll also just say that was great. And I'm so happy it was such a positive experience for the students. And Ms. Drowick, thanks for your leadership with this leadership group. It's great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Great work, guys. Can't wait to hear what next year brings us from our two who will still be here as seniors next year. I'm confident that your leadership will carry forward the next class. And for our seniors, just you've been invaluable resource over the last few years. So keep leading as you head on to your next challenges. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
It's a very proud parents' day right now. We can leave that open now too. It might keep swinging itself close. Thank you so much. All right. We are headed towards the athletic budget. One more business with guests moment. Welcoming our athletic director, Mike Capitasto today. And Dr. Shea and Mr. Mazza. And Mr. Capitasto will be walking us through a little bit of an overview of the Long Meadow High School athletics budget.
All right. I'll kick us off and we'll share a brief slide deck that we have prepared for you. At least once a year, we bring a presentation to the school committee on high school athletics. And this sort of complements and supplements regular reports that are given to the finance subcommittee that Mike regularly shows up at and that Tom leads us through. So I think that the intention here tonight is to provide you with an overview of the mechanics of the athletic budget, to give us a sort of baseline understanding of the receipts and expenditures that are associated with that budget. And Mike was kind enough to come along to answer any questions that you might have. So if you give me a minute, I'll just pull up the presentation and, shortly. All right. So again, just meant to be a sort of high-level overview of the athletic budget. And I know there's, annually, there's decisions that the committee needs to make relative to fees, relative to relations with the Booster Club, relative to the general fund expenditures, et cetera, et cetera. And so hopefully this will give you some information that will help you make informed decisions. This is a, it's a huge program, arguably the largest in the area, given our size. On a per pupil basis, I'd say we run the most expansive athletic program in the area, given the number of participants and the number of programs that we run. And so with each of the 50 total teams, that's, you know, well over, that's probably close to 100 coaches that we work with and volunteers. And there's programs across all three seasons. And about 66% of our students participate in at least one sport. So it's an expansive program that is under the leadership of Mr. Capitasto. At the highest level, a overview of the revenue and expenditures associated with the program. On succeeding slides, we'll break down the makeup of the revenue categories and the expenses. But you just get a sense that, you'll see that revenue has grown modestly. I think it's safe to say expenses have grown significantly. And you'll, from the next couple of slides, you'll get a sense of why that is. Inside the revenue line is the, in FY '23, the $180,000 that is that the school committee commits to the athletic budget from the general fund. So that's in that topline revenue line that you see. It is annually necessary to commit additional general fund support to close the gap between expenditures and revenue. So breaking that down, you'll see the sources of revenue that we enjoy to run the program. User fees in FY '23 generated $234,664. We anticipate that in FY '24, that number will grow up because the fees were revised for this school year. The reason that we're showing just up to FY '23 is because, you know, sort of the books are more or less closed on that fiscal year. So it gives us a full, complete picture. So user fees generate a significant amount of revenue for the program. Gate receipts, you'll see $80,000 in FY '23. The FY '21 would have been, and really even FY '22 would have been affected by COVID. So that's $79,000. I defer to Tom and Mike as to whether or not that's sort of historically more in line with what we've seen. The general fund commitment from the school committee since at least FY '19 has been $180,000. I can say that when I joined the district in FY '17, that amount was far below that $180,000. I won't put Mr. Mazza on the spot to tell us what that might have been, but.
$75,000.
$75,000. So the committee has recognized the regular increase in expenses associated with the program and has made a concerted effort in recent years to increase the general fund commitment to the athletic program. We found it fiscally wise and efficient to hire a dedicated athletic trainer in the '21, '22 school year. And so that expense was added in FY '22. And so you'll see that, that $545,000 figure is the revenue that we've received. And again, we've had to, the committee has had to commit additional funds from the general fund to make up the gap between that $545 and actual expenses. So actual expenditures are depicted on this slide. You'll see that expenses in some categories have remained stable, but expenses in many categories have jumped considerably. The one that probably stands out to you is the increases associated with transportation. And certainly we're open to your questions on that. But largely that relates to fuel costs. It relates to labor costs. It relates to the shortage of buses available to us. So sometimes we have to contract out with bus companies outside of the Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative. And it also relates to changes in the playoff structure, which have in some cases required our students to travel greater distances for either playoff competition or even in-season competition. So that transportation number is one that we are keeping our eyes on. We do anticipate that that number will come down modestly in FY '24. Other line items, other expenditures, you'll see are more sort of self-explanatory. Coaching salaries have increased mostly relative to collective bargaining agreements. And other categories are, again, if you have any questions on any of those, we're happy to answer. Again, the FY '21 numbers are, were significantly affected by COVID. We weren't traveling to games in FY '21. Most of the competition was in local pods with local teams.
Can I ask, when it says membership dues, what is that? Is that us paying membership dues to organizations or?
Yeah, yeah, correct. Yeah, yeah. So PBIC and the MIAA, we pay about five to six grand to each membership. And then we also, hockey, boys' ice hockey, we're part of the big nine, so we pay membership due there.
So what impacted FY '23 being quite as low as?
I think we restructured some of our, we put it in through the particular sport. We restructured some of this stuff.
The finance subcommittee had asked us to convey how the total expenditures relate to the overall budget. And so if you were to look at all of our expenditures from all the sources that you see on this slide, that represents $777,426, which is just over 2% of the general fund. The other way of thinking about this is to think about the commitment. If you take out all sources and just look at general fund commitments, it's a commitment in FY '23 of $411,514, which is 1.1% of the general fund. So moving on, oh, looks like Julie has a question.
Oh, yep, Julie.
Is now a good time to ask a question? I can't help it.
Yeah, go for it.
Oh, okay. Marty, I was just going to ask you to, or Tom, to just like tell us a little bit more about like what it means or like how we think about it from a budgeting perspective. That we budget $180,000, but we end up paying out of the down fund more than $400,000. Like, why don't we account for it? Do you know what I mean? Like, how do you think about that as a budgetary matter?
Want to take it or?
I think Julie, you know, this year, in terms of developing the FY '25 budget, there was a, when we proposed increasing user fees last spring, also a desire to look at that allocation in the general fund and a hope to increase it. I think looking at the challenge that we've been, we faced in terms of coming up with a balanced budget, it would have forced us to identify additional places where reductions could occur to incorporate a higher number. What happens is I think athletics ends up benefiting from savings that occur throughout the year that aren't known at the time that the budgeting process happens, whether it be attrition or people on leave of absences that do not receive compensation, that afford us the opportunity to provide that additional support to the program.
So just like, I guess, as a practical matter though, that means we, every year we know that we're not budgeting as much as we're going to spend. And then every year, we're kind of like hoping that we have savings that covers what we spend on athletics. Is that like a fair way of putting it? I'm just trying to like wrap my head around the way we think about it.
I think it's a fair way to put it. I think back to the third slide where it's the overview, is the dollar amount is... I think back to the third slide where it's the overview, is the dollar amount is definitely been unpredictable and has increased significantly post-COVID. And again, I think a number of factors, but transportation being one of them, that those related expenses more than doubled in less than a, a five-year period. So trying to keep up with it from a budgeting perspective, not knowing what that number's going to be. A lot of, a lot of the costs are associated with the number of students that participate, the number of programs in terms of levels or teams we're offering in each sport, how deep in a postseason each program is successful in terms of the competitions, which all add varying degrees of expenses that can change from year to year, just based on success and the number of students.
That, that makes sense. Nicole, is it okay if I?
Yeah, absolutely, yep.
I'm just, I'm just trying to understand how that compares to like the way that we approach other types of programs. Like, if you think about like, say, the music programs, I assume there's a similar, like, we're not really sure what the involvement is going to look like from year to year or whatever. So do those programs, do other programs have a comparable kind of dynamic where we are sort of like chronically under, under budgeting and then spending more? Or are the other programs, do you sort of like spend within, try to spend within what we're budgeting, if that makes sense?
Think of what's a little unique with athletics is that it is somewhat reliant on user fees. The only other program that I can think of that might be similar would be a summer enrichment program, where we don't know how many kids are going to sign up. It is reliant on fees that participants are paying. The difference with, I think, that program is that we will be more inclined to not offer an opportunity if there aren't sufficient signups to support the cost of the program. Whereas with athletics, we don't know what the total cost will be at the beginning of the season. Some of it is dependent, again, on postseason and, you know, how, where we're traveling with the new format of the power rankings and how postseason state tournaments operate. So, you know, you can, you can make an assessment based on the number of students or players that are paying the fee and how much of the allocation from the general fund would be available. But by the time we signed up students and created a schedule, we're, we're already past that point of being able to scale back on the costs associated to the program. So we're kind of committed to operating it at a certain level. If that makes sense, Julie.
Okay. Yeah, that makes sense.
So.
Other questions, Adam?
Four questions related to this slide. Is now the right time?
Yes.
Okay. So question number one, just going down kind of the columns. As far as the equipment entry fee and ice time, you know, we see these increases in, in the fees. Are these numbers keeping up with the, the needs of the programs as far as like the equipment is concerned, for example? I mean, are we, are, are we keeping, you know, track it, like doing any safety checks on the equipment? You know, do you feel like it is an adequate, you know, number as we keep going year to year? Or do you feel like we're, we're either under or overshooting on that as well?
Yeah, I mean, that's a great question. Like, like, for example, football, we have to send out helmets every year to be reconditioned. That's, that's, that's law, that's, that's, so, and those costs go up, you know? But that's, that's, we, we also send out the shoulder pads. And so I do think, again, take out FY '21, we've been pretty consistent with, with equipment. Again, track hurdles, trying to replace them, not all at once, you know, 10 or 12 one season, 10 or 12 the next season. Same thing with helmets, when we repurchase helmets. So I do think that we're, we, we, we have been very supportive of when things have come up, need, especially around safety. That's been our number one priority and we do, I don't know if it's going to continue to jump dramatically, but equipment fees are going up every year and, and things like that when we do do the order for the fall, winter, and spring. So that, that does play into it. But overall, I think our safety is never wavered.
So we're meeting those?
Correct.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
All right. Number two, just looking at the comparisons in the amounts for the home game services, you know, it's, it's kind of hard with a spread. We don't, you know, have some consistent data and kind of omitting FY '21 as an outlier. If you compare FY '29 to '22, it's, it's like an 18% jump. And from '22 to '23 is like a 26% jump. Do you, we, is it just like utilities is accounting for that increase? Or do we know what are the drivers of that?
So, great question. So '22, FY '22 was the start of the state tournament. That is the.
The new format.
New format, okay, for all sports.
For all sports. So if you have a team that does very well, that's potentially five home games they're going to get at the end of the year. Two in Western Mass and three in the playoffs. And for every round that we have, we are mandated to have so much support staff at those games per the MIA rules. And your official fees go up.
Okay.
And your officials, you, for volleyball, for example, you go from two officials to four officials. So there have been some increases in that. And then some of that is, for example, we were just talking about it, and I said, well, football, we went from, we're stuck in a rut right now with our schedule. We, we had three home games in FY '22 and six in FY '23. So contest management went up $7,000 just from, from that sport in particular.
Okay.
So a lot has to vary. I think you'll probably see, we might come down a little bit in contest management this year because it depends how well a team does. So there's some, some of those factors played into our, our home game services because those are also officials, as well as a clock operator or whatever it may be. But I think.
Public safety.
Yep, public safety as well, police officers involved in that and extra EMT if we had, needed one.
We have moved to the online ticketing to the, and it could be that that could generate some.
This year.
Yes, for that foot, this year.
But there's been almost a lengthening of the season and we have to meet the needs of that.
Correct. And so I think in another, hopefully we'll have two years of data. And then we're going, this is our third year, so we'll start to see where the trend really is.
Okay.
Yeah.
So then question number three, looking at the insurance line and miscellaneous, there's a lot of variability there. Is that more with the insurance or with the miscellaneous?
It's, it's, we restructured how we're labeling some of this stuff too. So, you know, in, in the past, you know, three or four teams benefited from a particular item, so we just put it in miscellaneous, so now we're splitting that. So that, you'll be, see some of that in there.
Okay. And then lastly, do we have any data comparing ourselves to other school districts of comparable size or participation to see how we're meeting the needs of our students as compared to other districts?
When you, you say as, as far as revenue or like money or?
As far as if there is any way that, you know, the, the Commonwealth keeps tabs on these things to make sure that, you know, needs are being met and that, you know, no one's, you know, spending a ridiculous amount, creating an unfair advantage or anything. Is there any data on that or?
You're talking participation levels generally or?
No, as, as far as, you know, I didn't know if there was any reporting that was required as far as athletics to mandate regulations or anything.
We would report in total the amount that is spent on athletics, both in the general fund and funds that are taken in through user fees.
Okay.
Or other gate receipts and miscellaneous revenue. They're not broken out, though, by any category, just in total.
Okay.
So each district annually would report the amount, but I don't know that there's any, I haven't seen anywhere where it's collected and compared.
Yeah, per student, how.
Yeah, exactly.
District spends or anything like.
Or the breakdown even general fund allocation versus other sources in terms of revenue.
Okay, just curious. Thank you.
Thank you, great questions. Other questions, Mary?
Um, I was just curious about the difference in athletic trainer salary also between FY ' '22 and FY '23. Is it a different person or?
So she came, we, we hired that person mid, mid, mid-year, so that's why it's.
FY '22 is the first year we hired it as a staff position. And it took us some time to find a candidate to fill the role. So we went through all of fall and into the winter season before we were able to bring, get somebody on board.
Thank you.
All right, I think we're good to keep, keep going.
So next, to the end is, is just for your information, our, our current user fees, these were updated for this school year, '23, '24 school year. We do have a family cap and there are subsidies available through the business office. As noted earlier, these fees generate, you know, over $230,000 in FY, generated over $230,000 in FY '23. And I think it's something that, you know, to go back to the earlier part of this conversation, if, I think if you'd asked me in the fall of '23, would we be able, you know, it was, I think one of our hopes was to increase the general fund commitment so that we wouldn't have to look for that additional general support that we talked about earlier. But with the FY '25 budget shaping up the way it did, it, it became impossible to do that. The fees for the '25, '24, '25 school year have not yet been set by the school committee, of course.
Can I ask, while we're on that last one? It talks about there being a subsidy available and I'm assuming that is tied to school lunch, if you ever do school lunches there, what, what is the setup for that? How well, publicized, how accessible?
Part of the process would be to submit a lunch application. But the criteria is based on family size and then there are thresholds of income that will then change the rate by sport.
Okay.
So depending upon income and household size will then determine eligibility for a possible reduced rate.
Okay. And do we have any subsidies that are available for kind of all the extras that go along with playing a sport? You're going to play X sport, which means you'll need these five pieces of equipment, potentially. Do we offer any subsidies or do we have any programs where student athletes that might be in need of that are able to access the supplies they need?
Not that I can think of. There is the Nico Sierra Foundation, which is available for subsidy for the actual user fee. It's been around for two years now.
Two years.
I believe there's information on the athletic website associated to that, programs for families to reach out directly for consideration for possible assistance with the user fee. But to your question, not, not off of the top of my head, I can't think of any funding or source of assistance related to the equipment needed to participate in a program.
Okay, that might be something worth looking at as we move forward to make sure it's accessible for everybody. Okay.
And then you really can't talk about the true cost of running an athletic program without thinking about the contributions that we receive from our booster club. So we're very fortunate that we have very active and supportive booster clubs across all three seasons and across nearly all of the sports. We try, we like to emphasize to parents that this is, that participation in the booster clubs is purely voluntary. We work collaboratively with the head coach and the heads of the booster organizations to identify needs that can be met by the booster club. But the, the funds that are generated by the booster clubs stretch out into a lot of many important areas, including uniforms, transportation, supplemental coaching, field, ice, or court rental, senior gifts, meals, banquets, you name it. Back in the fall, at the direction of the finance subcommittee, we had reached out to the booster clubs to ask them to give us some accounting of the financial support they were committing in all of these areas. And that's a spreadsheet that I've shared with the committee in the past. It gives us some rough idea of the, the commitment that the boosters are making in all of these areas. And I think that's something that we'll want to make part of our practice regularly going forward, just to really get an idea just how much, how much financial benefit we receive from the booster clubs. And, because it really ties into the true costs of running our athletic program because they, the boosters do provide, you know, in many respects, the boosters provide the types of support that, let's say, LEAF provides us, the Long Meadow Educational Excellence Foundation, or PTOs or PTAs provide. It's, it provides support in areas that enrich the experience for our student athletes. But the truth, so that is true, but, but it's also true that the booster provides some critical support in some areas that, you know, frankly, we probably ought to think about providing through the regular, through the regular budget. And so it's important that, you know, we, we keep that communication going with the booster clubs. A few years back, we produced this booster club advisory. It's available on our website and it lays out the role and function of the booster clubs. And it's also an attempt to convey what our hopes and expectations are of the boosters so that while we enjoy their support, we also want to make sure that they're not, you know, putting undue or unreasonable expectations among parents to contribute to booster club fundraisers. So, you know, all told, the, the amount that the boosters add to the program is probably our, the report that we generated back in the fall showed about $80,000 in additional support that the boosters provide. And it frankly, it may be even beyond that, but that was what our report generated. So, so that, again, I think when we're talking about the true costs of running the athletic program, it is important to think about the booster club contributions and the support we receive from it, so.
Julie?
Yeah, Marty, I had a question. You sort of alluded to it there. Like, what are the, what are the costs that the boosters are covering that you, that stand out to you as kind of like essential parts of the athletic program? You know, that like we couldn't operate our athletic program without?
I might defer to Mr. Capitasto on that or Tom, but I, I think when it, we always want to make sure that we are providing uniforms, for example, on a cyclical basis, that kids are wearing clean, up-to-date uniforms that meet the regulations of the MIA, you know? So that needs to happen. We, I think, have tried to convey to the, to the boosters what we see as a sort of reasonable, optimal amount of coaching that is sort of affordable and tied to our general fund, but sometimes the boosters might feel that there's some supplemental coaching needs. I think what jumps out to me is probably that category, supplemental coaching, transportation. We've had to rely and lean on the boosters more heavily in recent years as well, I'd say. But maybe Tom and Mike, if there's anything you'd add to that.
Those would be the top two uniforms and additional coaches that they, you know, whether it's a specialty goalie coach or whatever it may be, they're bringing in for the program, but those would be the top two.
Did I see?
Other questions?
I mean, we've, we've got a, a great overview and I want to thank you guys for putting together these, these numbers. It's, it's, it really helps kind of get a handle on what's going on. I mean, looking at these numbers and seeing where we're at, what are your goals for this next budget? Is there something that you're looking for to see added or reallocated?
I'll answer for him because he's too, he's too, I think any athletic director would, would, would want to advocate for the program, for additional coaching, uniforms, equipment, you know, you name it. So I, I think, Mike's, Mike's really good about identifying the needs to us.
I, I think overall, Mr. Maz is great. I mean, him and I talk on a daily basis of needs. Again, you know, you see the general fund and, and, you know, we say we only support $180,000, but in reality, we cover a lot more than that. But again, we talk about need and safety and priority and knowing that. in reality, we cover a lot more than that. But again, we talk about need and safety and priority and knowing that, um, it, you know, we're gonna have to figure it out on the other side of things. But, uh, yeah, just constant support of, you know, you know, if there's any additional funds or again, just constant, how we're doing it. It's, again, it's not ideal. It's not, you know, I'm doing it upfront, but I think overall, we're, we're, we're providing a, a, a good experience for our student athletes with what we're working with and with everybody's working with them.
I think I'd, I'd add, you know, obviously we're in the, just coming off a tou- a tough budget, um, series of budget discussions and I think we've had to evaluate many cost centers and I think that's something that Mike and Tom have been talking about. Is there, you know, are there efficiencies to be gained? Can we take a look at transportation? Can we take a look at game management, uh, to see if there are savings to be made in those areas in a way that doesn't compromise the, the student athlete experience? And I, but stepping back more broadly, it's always been my opinion that athletics is one of the biggest bangs for the buck that you're gonna get. In terms of the number of students that you keep engaged at really critical hours in their day, um, is, is very significant. And, you know, I think when you talk about seven-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand dollars in expenditures from a variety of sources, it seems to me that's a great investment when you're talking about engaging sixty-six percent of our Long Meadow High students. And our coaches are in it for their, their passion and love of the sport and, uh, and, but it's a, in some, in some cases, it's a thirty, forty-hour job, you know, on top of their, on top of their day jobs. So, um, we're really grateful for, to, to our coaches and how much time and commitment they give to the program and it's, it's a, the whole athletic program is, is a significant bang for our buck, I'd say.
Thank you for coming out tonight. I would, I would agree with that as a person who works in a high school, um, having and has had high school students in my family. But just knowing that you have a team that you're accountable to, that you have other adults in the building who are watching out for you specifically, there are real social and academic benefits to that as well. So appreciate you guys taking the time to come in and, and talk to us a little bit, um, and help us get a bit more of a handle on how the athletics budget works. Um, and thank you to you and all of our coaches.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm so sorry, Julie's hands up. Sorry. It's hard to see just the, there's like this really tiny thing.
Questions if that's okay. Sorry, Mike. Well, what, I just, um, um, Marty's point about efficiencies, I think that we would love to see, um, the results of your efforts there. To me, like, I don't have a particular sense that we're spending too much on athletics, but I think that like the diffuse, different like sources of funding and the way that we kind of, um, think about the school's contributions to the budget, um, makes it hard. We're not necessarily having the same conversations that we're having about other parts of the school's budget. So I think it's, and it's important for us to kind of see that here too. I think, I would be curious, I think Adam said this, but, um, to see the poor students that are in athletics compared to other areas around here, just kind of get a ballpark sense of where we are. But that, I actually, I was wondering, Mike, if you could just go through for a minute, like, the, like, how do we, how do we decide where we have freshmen JV varsity and, and where we don't and like who, who makes the decision about that? Is it like a decision we make here or is it kind of static? And then I was hoping you could maybe go over a little bit on the, like the differences between different sports in terms of the cost of equipment and transportation. Those are my questions.
So I, I think, uh, yeah, it's, it's, for example, girls soccer, um, you know, we advertise for a freshman position if numbers are, you know, warrant the, the having a freshman soccer team. So I think we look at that based off, uh, we also look at it based off of past history. Um, you know, uh, we've had a JV team for X amount of years. We don't anticipate us having freshmen or whatever it may be. So, um, some of the, we're, we're probably haven't added a ton recently. Um, I, I, so I think the numbers are probably where we are, uh, as far as levels goes.
Mike, is it safe to say that if there's, if there's interest at the freshman level and if there are other schools to play against, we run the program pretty much? Is that?
Correct. It's, it's, uh, so right now, um, we, we're on the borderline of interest for freshman baseball. We, we think we're gonna end up having enough, uh, numbers, um, but right now there's two other freshman teams to play. You know, but we'll play some smaller JVs and, and things like that. So we will build, we won't build out a whole game schedule. We'll build out about twelve to fourteen games, uh, modified schedule based off of, uh, who we can participate. But a, a lot of it's based off of need and, um, uh, again, conversations, if it's anything new, um, that's a conversation that, uh, all of us are probably involved in, uh, if we're gonna add a new, um, new sub varsity level.
And then we, we wouldn't add a coach without bringing that to the committee. Is that, I mean, that's been our, unless it's a reallocation or a movement, Tom? Is that?
Well, I mean, the, the salary schedule has certain, uh, levels of coaching already identified. So if it doesn't exist, we would have to bring it forward to school committee for uh, a memorandum of agreement to add it. So.
And then, uh.
Julie, you asked about equipment, I think, and I would say, you know, some of it's year to year. The ice hockey programs, obviously the cost associated, which are reflected in that equipment line are, uh, probably the highest or close to the highest in terms of all of the sports. Some years, there might be some higher related one-time cost to certain programs, like when we had to buy mats associated to the track and field program. You know, those can run ten to fifteen thousand, but they're needed once every five to ten years. So, so, you know, it can be skewed in terms of the individual year and the specific needs outside of the every-year purchases of ball, pucks and, you know, associated equipment. I would, I would just add, in the packet is also a more detailed financial breakdown of related costs by sport by the categories that we showed in the overview. Um, also, we would, Mike will, uh, put the financial in the presentation onto the high school's website, uh, once it, we're done presenting it here to school committee so that it's available for community members to also see.
Can you, Tom, can you talk about the, um, the differences in the transportation costs too? Cause I think they vary fairly significantly by team, right?
Yeah, I would, I would agree, yeah, Julie. I mean, again, I think some of that is, I think there are a number of factors and Mike can jump in based on the number of athletes there are by sport, uh, based on the length of their season in terms of postseason competition and based on the type of schedule they have. So if they're playing a predominantly, you know, greater Pioneer Valley schedule compared to independent games against districts or schools from the, uh, eastern part of the state or from New England, then that will contribute to the cost of transportation. But, and again, then depending upon the size of vehicle we need, sometimes we're able to get away with a smaller vehicle for some of the sports that have less participants than say a football program.
Are we coupling together on that note, teams where we can? If we have, say, a JV and a varsity playing in the same, they're going on the same bus, even if their games are not right of sync?
When we, so a few years ago, um, we also heard, you know, from, for example, volleyball. Volleyball, uh, freshman JV and varsity all play at the same site. So we also heard, that's a long day when we were all traveling together. So we did, uh, and it was tight to get all three teams on one bus. I mean, so, uh, you know, hearing that, we, you know, we are sending, um, an example like that, we are sending two buses. Um, because we don't want a kid sitting there for seven hours that is not participating. Um, so, but when we can, yes, we are, uh, we also at the mercy of busing. So, uh, we, we cannot get a bus before three forty-five from LPVC. So we are automatically going out to our second vendor, um, which is contracted out. Um, so we are, um, we also handcuffed in what we can use, uh, at certain times. Uh, and that, that adds to the transportation, um, cost and we are one of the la- later, uh, we are one of the schools that ends later. So when we get off a run at four o'clock, I can't even ask for a four-thirty start time. You know, some of these other schools, they're getting out at one forty-five, you know, bump it back a half hour. That's still, it's, it's good. You know, we're asking for an hour, you know, you know, because we're getting a bus at four, four fifteen when they're off their run. So, um, so we are handcuffed into certain cost expenses, uh, when we have, uh, four o'clock games times. So that adds to some of the cost.
Can't break the laws of physics.
Did that answer Julie all of your questions? I feel like we might've left some and/or Jamie.
No, I think, I think that was it.
That was all. Yep, Jamie.
Yep. Just, I can't agree more. You want more people participating in sports. That's kind of my backdrop to this whole thing. The more kids we can actually get involved and active, this is a great thing. That in mind, though, you do gotta be cost sensitive on this. So my question is, when do we have to make these, the, when do we have to publish the fees associated with these programs? Forget when that is.
Uh, Mike, when would we open up? Is it like July?
Ideally, we'd like to post, uh, before we head off to the summer. So if anybody has any questions, we can help out. So sometime early June, we, we would like to start the registration process to, you know, start posting.
And I know we're not planning on chatting about this now. This is more supposed to be just the framework, where we are, a level set. Uh, but just to kind of refresh everybody on whenever we chatted about this last year, we, we went and kind of went through this in detail. And we hadn't made an adjustment for a long time, like a decade. Um, so we were the poorer, uh, school committee that basically said, okay, we adjusted. And then we obviously had all of this happening as well. So we didn't adjust for a decade and then it's not up there anymore. Then we had COVID and we had MIA change. It's like a whole big whammy to where, okay, we just, we're, we didn't mean that to happen. It happened. It was outside of our kind of purview whenever that was made. Um, whenever we chatted about it last year, we looked at it sport by sport. So as we look at this, we should probably bring that back and kind of show everybody, hey, cross-country didn't get a big jump, but ice hockey got, it hurt. You know, soccer got more and we looked at a cost by, by each individual center. So it was appropriate that we weren't just going, go up on every single one. I think we should look at that. Um, the last year too, that we also talked about, we had very long debates on it, just to kind of get, is whether we peg this to our general fund increase from the town. Do we make it a policy that if, if the town is going up by three percent, we're going up by three percent? We, we, we were throwing out ideas. I don't know what the right decision or idea is, but if we're not keeping up either with lowering our costs by three percent, which is twenty-two, twenty-three thousand dollars, or increasing our fees by that amount or some combination, you know, we're basically just taking kind of from Peter, they're pay-poll. It doesn't, you don't feel it unless you don't go and change your fees for a decade. Um, you know, where we didn't change them and it, this is very common. Everyone around here does this, every district. This isn't us, but we kind of made a big adjustment. So it was kind of painful last year. Certain sports really got beat up. But the thing I would say is, I, I don't know, as a parent on this, um, number one, I think we need to look at it by sport. Cause I think it's only fair that certain sports where if it costs more, that I shouldn't be, if I choose to play a particular sport, I shouldn't subsidize other sports and vice versa. And my kids play one of the sports that are the most expensive. Um, so they, we're definitely subsidizing certain sports. We should look at that and say, is that appropriate? Is, and you know, how we adjust that to keep up with the twenty-one grand that we gotta kind of keep up with, or we're going negative every year. If we go negative for four years, it's a hundred grand. You gotta find that somewhere else in your forty-one million. So that's kind of what we talked about a lot last year and it was kind of a lot of moving parts associated with it. So as we look at those fees, I just wanted to kind of remind everybody, kind of, that's what happened. Um, we decided not to make it policy. Just cause it was, it felt like a lot. Um, we had a couple that went from, I think, five hundred to eight hundred and fifty dollars is what ice hockey went up. I'm pretty sure that's what it went up, went up a lot. Um, so, you know, we, we kind of didn't want to put all that out there. But we did chat about, do we make this some sort of policy? So we're not redoing this every single year. And then it's a lot of guidance for parents so they know that we're not gonna do that to them again. Cause they'd prefer us not to kind of go up by three hundred and fifty dollars. They'd prefer it to be fifteen dollars, you know, and make it more reasonable with what costs are going on. So just as a quick heads up on, yeah.
Other questions? I'm wondering if when we look at the question of funding, um, and how we compare, um, what Adam had brought up earlier, relating to our funding, our fees, our revenue, et cetera, comparing us to other districts. Um, do you have, do you speak to the athletic directors for other LPVC?
Yeah, so I have all that of what other districts' user fees are. Um, I just wouldn't have it per student.
Okay.
But I, I, you know, we, we, yes, we, we talk and we all share, hey, what's your user fee, what's from your general fund, but.
Can I just add one comment to that? Um, just for everybody who wasn't here for the conversation last year. We are unlike every other town in this area. So you get, many towns don't have user fees. That's our choice as a town. We are not a commercial town. You know, if we start loading up Williams Street and we get rid of all the houses and put a bunch of commercial there, we won't pay any user fees. That's not the mandate of this town. So it gets hard to compare because even East Long Meadow, very different than here. It, it's very different. West Side, it's like, you, you, it's a different world, right? You know, you know, you go into Holyoke, Chickapie, you know, they're not paying user fees. Cause it's not this, that's not how we're set up as a town. We have very little commercial property. We have very little expanding, you know, tax base. So we're kind of limited. But we did look at that. I remember Mike brought it all in and kind of went through all the detail with Tom too, and it was kind of like, well, that's not really, you're, you're not comparing like things. So.
No, and I, I get that for, sorry, I get that for user fees. That totally, you're right. That's one hundred percent, uh, makes sense. I'm more curious about sort of, yeah. What are we spending compared to what other districts spend? That per pupil rate, that per, you know, athlete, what, where are we seeing that we compare expenditure-wise?
Uh, that was just what I was gonna say. I don't know if that, bringing up that concept of how much we're spending for student is useful. That was just an idea to see how we're doing to make sure that we're, you know, to your point, getting as many kids involved as possible to, to get them active, showing as much support as we can for the athletic, you know, program.
But that is a really good point, the way you both, I mean, like knowing, okay, Minnetec's, where, who cares where the money's coming from? Are they spending?
Yeah.
Half million dollars, a million dollars? I, I don't know. At least knowing, are we in the range? Are we, you know, are we spending enough in this area? Yeah. It's not a bad, you know, it's probably an easy number for them to get to, to just have an idea.
Well, it's easy for us to ask for.
Could we do, Nicole, could we do, um, comparison of the, the fees for athletes and then comparison of the overall per athlete spend that's inclusive of fees? We could do, we could do like what the fees are, what the general fund spend is in comparable towns and then what the inclusive of user fees like per people or per athlete spend is.
Yep.
Is that on a per sport basis? Is that?
I don't know that it has to be. I like, let's keep it simpler.
How many kids are you participating and how much you spending?
An average.
Yeah.
I think an af- yeah, average per athlete across sports is one.
All right, perfect. Other thoughts, questions and/or comments?
Do we have any clubs?
We, we, we have, uh, seventy-so clubs, but that's all run through Ms. Strawick and, um, yeah, correct. So, uh, there are a few athletic clubs involved in that. But again, that's all through, uh, Ms. Strawick, uh, until, uh, one of them become an MIA sanctioned sport. And then that's something that we have to decide, do we support or not support? Like ultimate frisbee's always on the table. There's always a few sports that are, uh, going through the process to add into the MIA schedule.
Is rugby one?
Rugby is one, correct. Yep, that's new. That's probably. Rugby is one, correct. Yep, that's new. That's probably in the last five or six years they added it at the state level.
All right. Mary?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, going back to a comment that was made much earlier in this conversation. Mike, do you feel like our boosters are funding parts of our program that should be funded by the school district? Or is all of their funding considered supplemental? Because someone mentioned that they're funding coaches. So, shouldn't those be school district salaries?
In an ideal, yeah, I mean, and I think we should all, I mean, in an ideal world, yes. In an ideal world, appropriate levels of coaching are fully covered by the school budget.
Yeah, I think it's important to acknowledge that all coaches are, go through the background check, whether volunteer or paid. So that there aren't people, there aren't individuals either on the sidelines or interacting with students that aren't part of the hiring process. So, where the compensation comes from is a different conversation.
I mean, I think, Mary, partly your question too, might be somewhat subjective. Marty, you're saying in an ideal world, all coaches' salaries would be covered by our budget. Well, what does an ideal world look like? Is an ideal world a coach and an assistant coach? And are we paying those salaries? And if we are, then anything on top of that would be supplemental, to Mary's point. As opposed to part of what we would expect to pay out of the regular school budget. Versus, are there gaps in what is sort of maybe less an ideal world and more of a standard world for high school sports? To Mary's question, are, are some of these expenditures supplemental as opposed to standard?
Well, and how do you determine what is standard and what is supplemental?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think.
I think that's been a conversation that's been debated for many years, both internally and, you know, amongst communities. What might be, in my opinion, appropriate and provide the necessary safety for participants might not be the same as what somebody else views. So, I think it, I think it's going to be dependent upon who's making those decisions.
I trust you.
Is it considered across teams though? So?
Again, I think, Mary, it depends on the nature of the sport in terms of the per participant to coach ratio. Would I say it's equal across sports? No, I would not. I wouldn't say that that ratio is exactly the same. And again, a lot of it has to do with cross-country is very different than football. And so, the number of coaches track. I mean, so I think it's really dependent upon the specific sport that can drive what that number of coaches that is necessary or appropriate for that program.
I guess to play devil's advocate though, someone might say, well, you know, in this sport, we could also use cross-training coaches or we could also use strength coaches. I am just pointing out that it sounds as though some of our coaching is being paid for outside of our school district. And we're talking about school district budget for sports. And so, should we be funding the coaching positions? That's it.
It's a tough one.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Julie, can I see your hand too?
I, you know, the more we talk about this, the more dumb questions I'm going to have. I'm so sorry. But I just want to, I want to go back to the other thing about how much we, we put in the, our budget versus how much we spend. Is it, perhaps that we don't even put enough in the budget to cover the coaches' salaries? Like, are we not even funding enough for the expenses that we know we're going to have, setting aside the kind of like, you know, things that vary based on enrollment or cost of transportation and things like that?
So, for example, when we look at that one hundred and eighty thousand dollars, is that meant to include coaches' salaries? Or would that be a part of our, a different line item in the budget that's more related to salaries and?
No, I think the history has been that the general fund allocation has been used for salaries. In the past few years, we've had to charge all of the coaches' salaries to the general fund plus some non-salary expenses to support the program. So, I think to your question, does the current FY twenty-five budget contain an allocation that will cover the expected FY twenty-five athletic salaries? My answer would be no, based on the number of teams we've seen and the consistency of the offerings we've provided, that the amount of salaries will be at least what was presented in the overview in twenty-three and probably higher, just based on adjustments that are applied to the schedule.
So, but what about the allocation plus like kind of expected user fees based on?
Yeah, I mean.
Does that cover like our core expenses? I think part of what I'm trying to understand is like, how much of our athletics budget is dependent on like, I hope things shake out and we lose some people and we gain some something. You know what I mean? Like?
I would say for the last two years, it's been keeping my fingers crossed that we would have the funds available. I think, again, pointing to that overview slide and the, the amount that that's changed from nineteen to twenty-three, it's been unpredictable. And so, either way, we, you know, we would have to address that shortfall if we didn't have funds within the budget to cover it at the end of the year.
And remember what we said earlier, coaching levels are defined in our collective bargaining agreements across all sports.
Correct.
And, you know, it really comes down to what we might think is an appropriate staffing level for the student experience and for student safety. Others might have different opinions about that. And, you know, we might think, and then it comes down to the specialization that's required within that sport. Basketball is less specialized than football. Track and field has more specialized, need for more specialized coaching than across country, presumably. So, these are decisions that I, I would want the committee to know, the community to know, that Mike has and Tom have a really good handle on the, what we see as appropriate levels of coaching and a good handle on the adults that are working with our kids, how many adults and who those adults are. So.
I think part of what is, you know, I think some of this is clarifying for me is that like the budget for athletics is more precarious than we would like it to be because we're not able to budget for it upfront. And it also means that when we're having a conversation about like a given fiscal year's budget, we're not able to fully think about, think about what we're spending because it doesn't fully account for what we're spending on athletics. I just, I was inspired by somebody who's like in an ideal world thing. Because I think in an ideal world, we would put, we would fully fund our athletics budget, right, through, through the actual fiscal year budget process. I know that we're far from there, but.
I would absolutely agree. Ideally, I would love to be able to present a budget that has the funding we believe necessary to support the program. It would require some difficult decisions, but also I can't guarantee you what that number is from year to year. I don't know that bottom line, as you indicated, Julie, it's, it's fluid from year to year. It's really hard to pin down the exact amount that would be necessary.
Yeah, it's fluid from year to year. But I think what I'm hearing is that in some cases, like, we're not even covering the fixed expenses, right? Where?
Again, I think.
There are expenses that are known.
I think it depends when you look at that, the detailed financial, we break down, we allocate the hundred and eighty thousand by sport to kind of be fair. I think we've debated back and forth whether it's by sport or by participant to kind of be adjusting or providing an equal allocation to calculate how, based on the allocation from the general fund and the revenue that comes in, how it compares to the costs associated to the program, to look at, are there certain sports that might be generating additional revenue over their expenses versus any that are costing us more than what is being provided for, similar to what Jamie was asking. So, I mean, it's, again, it's, you know, when you take in user fees and the general fund allocation, how you allocate that, would it cover all of the costs? I mean, I, I want to believe that the seven hundred-plus thousand that's listed there are all necessary costs, or else we wouldn't have them. We wouldn't have incurred them if they weren't needed for the program's operation in twenty-three.
I mean, I've got a dumb question. If, if we've exhausted all the good ones. Now, where did, where did we get the hundred and eighty from? Because it seems like we're seeing that the costs are increasing. And with a lot of the budget items, we've talked about how we're increasing those, trying to be commensurate as the years go by. And given that static number, like was, where did that number, one eighty, come from?
I, I think as Superintendent indicated back in seventeen, I think there was a commitment to increase it. So, in eighteen, we went to one fifty. In nineteen, we went to one eighty. And then in subsequent years, I think the idea would have been to try to continue to increase the appropriation during the budget process. It, I think, is similar to the conversation we've had this year. What, what are the choices that we're going to be faced with to continuing to add additional funds to that line, to the program? So, I don't want to say it's arbitrary, but I think we've been stuck there now for a few years. And during last spring's conversation, when an adjustment to the user fees was discussed, part of that conversation was looking to increase that hundred and eighty thousand by a dollar amount and continue to increase it, knowing that not only was there an increased amount needed to support the program because costs have been going up, but I think as Jamie alluded to, our revenues have not been increasing at a consistent equal rate as expenses have been. But I just think the budget challenges from year to year have kind of restricted that increase.
I think the last bullet on the FY twenty-four budget presentation called for an increase in the FY twenty-five allocation towards athletics, you know, and we just haven't, we weren't able to achieve that, given the challenges that, that we faced.
No easy decisions.
No.
Well, some of those expenses are, are very, like you said earlier, a little bit out of our control. I mean, I'm looking at FY nineteen, and we only went up a little over fifty thousand additional funds for the general fund. By twenty-twenty-three, we were up a hundred and eighty thousand dollars from that. A hundred thousand of that is transportation. Just, just transportation went up a hundred thousand dollars from nineteen to twenty-three. That's a huge increase. So, that's, some of that is, like you said, stuff that we don't have maybe as much opportunity to address right now.
Yeah, and I mean, earlier today, Finance Sub Julie did ask to pull some information together about the cost of transportation related to local competition versus traveling to games in the eastern part of the state. I think as Superintendent indicated, I think there's a number of factors that contributed to the increase in transportation over those years.
All right. Any last thoughts before we move forward?
I'll just say one thing.
Yes.
I noticed in the, whatever you shared earlier, two thousand and eighteen, for the history of the athletic department, that there was about seven hundred student athletes. And now, there's a thousand. And we went through a pandemic and the rising costs of safety and transportation. And it's, you're still growing a successful program is to be commended. So. High school sports, I would be last without, so.
Thank you.
Very true. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Have a lovely evening. Appreciate you coming by. And we are moving on to other reports. We'll start with Chair Report. A couple of things of note. First off, thank you to the staff at Long Meadow High School for successful spring conferences last week. It was good to get to see everybody and touch base and hear how all of our students were doing. So, appreciate the time that went into that. I know elementary is next week. So, thank you in advance for the time they'll spend on that. We also have the senior play coming up this week, Thursday through Saturday, High School Musical. So, that looks to be a fairly fun evening slash Saturday afternoon. And a shout out to everybody who is probably still at the Long Meadow Public Schools Strings Festival tonight. The district-wide strings festival, it's always fun to have the district-wide events and get to see all the way from fourth grade forward. So, I hope that is going well. We're headed into the busy season of spring sports and the spring events and end-of-year events. And I'm sure in a moment, Andrew will have lots more of those to add in. But before we do that, give an opportunity for any other school committee members to make any announcements and/or recognitions from things over the last few weeks. All right, seeing none, we're going to head into Chair Report, or Superintendent's Report, sorry.
Sure. There's a, a report in your electronic file, Middle School Project. We're excited to announce on March twenty-seventh, there'll be a kickoff visioning session that the entire community is invited to. It'll be here in the central office. The idea is to sort of launch the conversation on crafting an educational plan for a new middle school here in Long Meadow. So, we're excited about that. Our educators had an opportunity to meet with the design team on Friday during our professional development day. So, they spent about an hour and a half kind of crafting ideas to contribute to that vision as well. So, we also have, some of our administrators are headed out to Rain Tree. They have a brand-new middle school and a recently renovated middle school, a reno add. And so, some administrators will be checking that out down in Rain Tree. So, we'll, we'll kind of create those opportunities for staff and the building committee to get out to see some, some exemplary new middle schools. The professional development day in general was, was fantastic. Great opportunity for our middle through high school educators to learn more about universal design. We had a keynote speaker in the auditorium that kicked off the day. And then they met in discipline-based teams to think about how to apply some of the concepts that they learned about. Shout out to our central office admin who really put together a very detailed professional development plan for all bargaining units, for all employees this past Friday. Our nurses were involved in stop-the-bleed training. They were working on some poison lessons. They were working in their, in their SNAP software. That's the SNAP, the software that manages medical and health records. Paraprofessionals learned about executive functioning and how to sort of ensure that students have opportunities to fade from the support that they get if it's necessary and needed. And our clerical staff was involved in some training on Munis, the procurement software, among many other activities. So, it was a great day. Appreciate the chance to, to have that on Friday. Elementary literacy review is underway. The CKLA pilot has been launched today. Our educators met with, met virtually with trainers from CKLA to sort of debrief on the opening of that, of that pilot. So, lots going on tomorrow evening. Mr. Mazza, Ms. Paris Crowe and I will be visiting the Special Education Alliance of Long Meadow, the SEAL organization, to talk about the FY twenty-five budget and special education staffing. So, looking forward to that opportunity. That's it.
All right. Questions or anything related to that? Other administrator reports. Anything to add, Mr. Mazza?
Just briefly, I wanted to inform the committee and the community that our food service provider, Fresh Picks Cafe, have informed us that they were recently purchased by the Witson's Culinary Group, which was the other company that bid in our recent procurement for management services. No indication yet whether or not the name will be changing. At least early indications are they're going to continue going by Fresh Picks Cafe. So, no action is necessary at this time. But we look forward to their continued service and efforts to provide meals to our students. Also, I think. Also, I think we would look forward to working with the Center Green Club in bringing forward reusable utensils at maybe all the elementary schools to help kind of begin the process of modifying that behavior at elementary level, so that as they progress up through the secondary grades, they'll have those habits learned, as we continue to still work at the high school to change that behavior. So, look forward to the superintendent's meeting with them to support that change.
All right, wonderful, thank you. Now, Andrew, student representative report.
So, just to start, a couple of reminders in terms of dates. Spring sports will begin on Monday, March 18th, and Quarter Three ends on Thursday, March 28th. Good Friday is that Friday, so that's why it doesn't end on a Friday. The seniors will hold three performances of High School Musical in the LHS Auditorium this Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. The Thursday and Friday shows are at 7:00 p.m., and the Saturday show is at 1:00 p.m. Tickets are $10 each. They can either, selling them at the door, or students were able to buy tickets today, and they can also buy them tomorrow before school in front of the library. What else? Last week, Monday through Thursday, students met with their teachers to discuss course recommendations for next year. And then, on Thursday, students will be able to enter their course request into Power School, and then, March 19th through April 4th, students will meet with their guidance counselors to discuss these course requests. And then, the Class of 2025 will hold a Little Lancers fundraiser on March 28th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the high school. Fifth graders will have a fun-filled evening with games and activities run by junior students. And I believe it is a, no, no, I, they, oh, tickets are $10, sorry.
All right.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Lots going on. All right, other reports. LPVC, Mary.
Our meeting is next Wednesday night.
Next Wednesday. All right, great, thank you. Energy and Sustainability, Adam.
The Energy Committee will be setting aside a certain amount of Gibbs-free energy to have a meeting on 26th to talk about further energy needs in the Long Meadow community.
All right, great, thank you. SEAL.
Michaela. As Marty was saying, tomorrow night, there is a SEAL event. It's a, first, there's a coffee and connection at the Pioneer Yacht Club, if anyone wants to come in person, have some coffee and refreshments, and connect with other parents. That's at 6:30, and then there'll be a Zoom at 7:00, where Tom Mazza and Nicole Paris-Crowe will be presenting about the FY '25 budget.
All right.
Yeah.
All right, Middle School Building Committee, we already talked about, so there's nothing else to add there, and we're on to Subcommittee Reports. Finance Subcommittee, Jamie.
So, Finance Subcommittee met this morning. We did have some discussion about the athletic reports that we've discussed. We have in your packet two FY '24 budget documents, kind of updates where we stand in terms of tracking the FY '24 budget. I would say the projections really have not shifted very much in either direction in the last two months, but we continue to monitor that. There are some items, we'll also discuss the FY '25 budget associated to school choice and MEDCO slots, which is coming up a little later on the school committee agenda. But for your consideration tonight, there is a consent agenda, which has, I believe, eight building use requests that Finance Sub did approve. And I don't know, Nicole, if you want to read them, or you want me to list them off?
Do you want to list them, and then we can see if anybody has any they'd like to?
Sure, so there are eight building use requests. There is a request by the Long Meadow Parking Rec Department for use of the high school for a dance recital. Dates are in April and May. Dance recital by Dance, Inc. for use of the high school auditorium and classrooms for dates June 12th and 13th. A dance recital by the Dance Company on, for the high school cafeteria, auditorium, and classroom on June 7th and 8th. A dance recital by Impressions Academy of Dance for use of the high school cafeteria and auditorium on June 6th and June 9th. Artistic Dance Conservatory, again, for a dance recital for the high school cafeteria, auditorium, and classroom for June 14th and 15th. The Indian Association of Greater Springfield for use of Glenbrook Cafeteria, Auditorium, and Classroom Space for April 6th for a cultural event. The National Multiple Scoliosis Society for use of Williams Parking Lot on Saturday, May 4th, and Sunday, May 5th for a, a run to register participants. And then, a request by the Long Meadow Police Department for use of Blueberry Hill Elementary School for a active threat training on April 16th and April 19th.
All right, so, just as a reminder, there are no discussions of items on a consent agenda, so if you would like to remove one of these from the consent agenda, we would vote to remove that. If anybody would like to request a removal from the consent agenda, that would be an excellent time, and/or make a motion related to the consent agenda.
Can we vote to approve the consent agenda in aggregate?
Yes, that's exactly what it is.
Okay, perfect.
We only pull them if somebody does not want to. Yeah, okay.
I'm listening.
It's hard at this point.
I move that the school committee approve the consent agenda for the March 12, 2024 school committee as presented.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Emphatically seconded.
There you go. There is no discussion, so we will move directly to a vote. Adam?
Yay.
Michaela?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
And yes, for me as well. Thank you.
There's one more item on your agenda from Finance Sub, which is a request for approval for a FY '24 grants and special revenue revision. This would be our second revision in FY '24. There are, I believe, seven or eight grants, nine grants, that are receiving either a modification, a revision to the distribution of the budget, and/or an increase in the allocation that was originally approved and accepted by the school committee back in the fall. Additionally, there are four grants, sorry, three grants, that are new to being added to the budget, which I believe the superintendent has mentioned in previous reports, but one is a grant, the SEL grant, in the amount of $93,455, a special ed IEP grant, which is for training on the new IEP, in the amount of $26,648, and a state grant for chronic absenteeism, addressing chronic absenteeism, in the amount of $10,000. The total revision of all of the changes would increase the budget by $134,760.
All right. Great, thank you. We have a possible recommended motion and/or discussion.
I move on the recommendation of Finance Subcommittee, the school committee, to approve the budget revision as specified in the document, Grants Special Revenues Revision Number Two, and dated March 12, 2024.
Thank you. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, we move to a vote. Adam?
Yay.
Michaela?
Yes.
Jamie? Mary?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
And yes, for me as well. All right, I think that's everything for Finance Sub. Yes?
Thank you.
Policy Sub, Michaela.
Yes, we met right before our school committee meeting, and we're working right now on coming up with a plan for advertising in schools policy, KHB. We've spent a lot of time talking about it, looking at different policies, working with parents in the community, and getting feedback from them. It's been really interesting, and we're really hoping to be able to craft a policy that will help give money towards individual sports, and help them meet their needs, and at the same time, being careful of Title IX, and making sure that things are equitable. So, that's what we're working on.
All right, thank you. Curriculum Sub does not have a report today. Evaluation Sub, we met on March 6th, and had the opportunity to go over a mid-year review with Superintendent O'Shea. Lots going on in the district, and we were able to get a little bit of an update on each of those things, and how they relate to both the professional practice goal, the student learning goal, that the superintendent has set for himself, and also our district improvement plan. Did you want to give a little overview of that?
Sure, yeah. It was, I appreciated the conversation, good chance to sort of take inventory of, of what we've started, what I've started, what, what is nearly done, what is still in the starting blocks. And the, the, a lot of great feedback from the Evaluation Subcommittee, especially in the area of sort of sustainability, you know, sustaining and retaining staff, sustaining and retaining the administrative team, and just making sure that, you know, we're well-positioned for the future. And so, we have a great team right now, and I appreciated that Subcommittee was thoughtful about that, and thinking about how we can, can sustain and grow in the future. Couple, couple highlights, I think part of the focus for me this year has been on my own professional development, particularly in the area of meeting the needs of 21st-century learners, also in the area of sort of working effectively as a, as a co-lead on many of our DEI initiatives. So, made, I think, good progress on that. One of the things that I'll continue to work on is developing community feedback for the future development of a new district improvement plan, so that is out of the gates via a stakeholder survey that has been issued. And then, continuing to enhance offerings as they relate to our vision of graduate, leading that effort, and finally, leading the work associated with the middle school building project that's been, it's becoming a heavier lift, and it goes in cycles, and there's quiet times, and then there's times when we're very, very busy. And right now, it's one of those times when we're very, very busy as we launch the visioning process. Also, proud of the work we've done in relation to launching a K8 SEL program for all five of our schools at that level. So, lots going on, some things that I still need to kind of get moving on, and one of the things we talked about was revised website to ensure that it is accessible for folks with disabilities, and accessible for individuals whose first language is not English. So, that's, that's something that, you know, we just haven't moved the needle on, but it's something that we ought to continue to keep our eyes on, because it's important that that website represents us as an inclusive district. Yep, that's it. So, there's a, in your packet, there's a copy of my annual plan, and I highlighted it in green, yellow, and red, green, meaning those things that are nearly done, yellow meaning good progress, red meaning still yet to be started, so.
All right, and we look forward to meeting again in a couple of months, see where we are. All right, Naming Subcommittee is meeting on Monday, March 18th, so we'll look forward to hearing an update after that. We have no ongoing business, and that brings us to our new business, beginning with the Student Opportunity Act Plan.
Sure, yeah. So, when the Student Opportunity Act was passed in 2019, it, what came with it was a significant increase in Chapter 70 funds, although we didn't experience that this year, but it did increase Chapter 70 funding across the Commonwealth, but it came with some strings attached, and one of the strings was that school districts had to annually, have to annually develop a, an SOA plan. I shouldn't say annually. It's every three years, you have to develop an SOA plan that is subject to approval by the school committee. The SOA plan is in your packet, it is very detailed, but what I would say is that it really is truly a subset of existing district initiatives. It is a subset of our existing budget. There's nothing in here that will send us off, frankly, in new directions. It's, there's nothing in here that sends us off with new budget requirements. But it's meant to be a focused reflection of our commitment to raising student achievement. And so, appreciate Dr. Nelson, our curriculum director, for pulling this together. And again, I hope as you read it, you'll see that it is a reflection of ongoing existing initiatives. So, happy to answer any questions you might have about that Student Opportunity Act Plan.
All right, this will be something we approve at our March 27th meeting. It has to be done by April 1st, correct?
Yeah, you could bring it back from the 27th, or, yeah, yeah.
So, any questions related to this, opportunities for discussion? All right, seeing none. We will circle back to that then, give everybody some time to read through thoroughly, and if you have questions, reach out to Dr. O'Shea or Beth Nelson.
Yep.
All right, perfect. School Choice, that brings us to School Choice review.
I'll start it, and Tom, help out, please. So, annually, the school committee is required to decide if we will continue to participate in the School Choice program, and also whether or not we will open additional slots for students in the MEDCO program. And so, you'll see some enrollment data in your packet. We are graduating seven School Choice students, so there are seven in 12th grade. So, our proposal for you tonight is to consider adding, replacing those seven essentially with seven new School Choice students at the ninth grade at Long Meadow High School. As far as MEDCO, the recommendation tonight, we have two MEDCO students are graduating. Our recommendation would be to add two additional students at the ninth grade, but also to open two MEDCO slots at kindergarten, so an increase of, a, four total MEDCO slots for the '24, '25 school year. I would say that what we try to do in the, in making these decisions is to, you know, make sure that we're not tipping our budget to a place where we would need to hire additional staff to welcome these new students. We want to add in really thoughtful, judicious ways. The other caveat I'd say is that if, you know, if the committee wanted to consider levels beyond the numbers that we're recommending tonight, we have that opportunity. In other words, we can come back to this and add additional Choice students, or even add additional MEDCO students, if that's something the committee is interested in. So, seven Choice students at ninth grade, two kindergarten MEDCO, MEDCO students, and two ninth-grade MEDCO students is the recommendation before you tonight.
Okay. And if I recall correctly, our enrollment kindergarten continues all the way up until, basically, when kindergarten begins, so we can continue adding, if we find ourselves with space, we could add School Choice spots, ideally, by early summer at the latest.
Yeah, I'd say, I think the Choice cutoff is sometime in June.
We have to certify our vote by June 1st.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, any thoughts related to this?
Do you have MEDCO students in preschool, or it's, you just start in kindergarten?
Starts in kindergarten. I've never had that question asked, but I'm almost certain it doesn't allow for preschool students. But, good question. We'll double-check on that.
All right. Adam?
No, I just said zero thoughts.
Okay. Any other thoughts, questions, and/or if not, possible motions?
I move on the recommendation of the Finance Subcommittee that the school committee accepts students in the MEDCO program for the 2024, 2025 school year, and the fall twenty-five school year in the following grade level and number of seats. Grade kindergarten, number of seats, two. Grade nine, number of seats, two.
All right. We have a motion for Metco. Do we have a second?
Seconded.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Nay.
This one is the, uh, vote for the number of Metco students. Um, seeing no discussion, we'll move to roll call vote. Adam?
Yay.
Michaela?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
And yes for me as well. We have one other possible motion related to school choice.
I move that the school committee approve opening seats for school choice students in the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five, in the following grades and number of seats per grade. Grade nine, number of seats, seven.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to vote. Adam?
Yay.
Michaela?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
And yes for me as well. All right. We have one more motion related to a, um, executive session. Before we add into that, I will entertain a motion.
I move that the school committee meet in an executive session pursuant to MGL Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One-A, purpose to conduct a strategy session in preparation with collective bargaining with Unit A, and purpose seven, consideration of release of executive session minutes of previous meetings, not to reconvene to open session.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Seconded.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to vote. Adam?
Yay.
Michaela?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
And yes for me as well. Um, the open session of the meeting is adjourned. Have a great evening, and we will see you all in two weeks. Good night, Andrew.